September 9th, thank you, Monday, September 9th. Very good. First item on the agenda, roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Doppler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mauch.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Bean.
I believe is on the phone there, just getting it booked up. First item on the agenda, discussion items, item 2.0, authorize issuance of sewer, reserve revenue bonds, Series 2019A to finance undertaking of improvements of the municipal water, wastewater treatment facility.
Good evening.
Good morning. Mr.?
On this first item, we are requesting that you adopt a resolution authorizing issuance of $1,425,000 in wastewater reserve revenue bonds for improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. And because this is a wastewater project, it does qualify for the low-interest state revolving loan funding, which is 2% for 30 years. Did you have any questions on that?
Any questions about the upgrading, yes, Ms. Weber, move's approval? Is there a second? Second by Doppler. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Bean, are you with us yet? Still no Mr. Bean. Okay, item 2.2, authorize issuance and set sale of refunding improvement bond Series 2019, sorry, 2.1. Apparently in a hurry this evening, I don't even know what date it is. 2.1, Public Works Operations Approval of Bids, Construction Services Consulting and Reimbursement Resolution and Budget Amendments, Project Number 8030. Good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of council. My name is Nicholas Blackwell. I am the Public Works Services Coordinator. I am pleased to present this item tonight for a project I've personally been working on, along with John McNellis, sanitation supervisor, and Brent Olmstead, lead equipment operator, for the sanitation department. In consultation with the finance department, we have put together a detailed staff report with attached information for your reference. I will provide some background, introduce our lead consultants, to brief you on the project particulars, and then I will provide the summary staff recommendation at the end. The City of Grand Forks bailing, transfer, and scale facilities are constructed in 2000 as accolade facilities to the city's inert municipal waste solid landfills. The city continues to provide an integrated, sustainable, solid waste-related services for the city northeast North Dakota region and operating under permits issued by the North Dakota Department Environmental Quality Waste Management Division. This landfill scale and building rehabilitation project will provide for a renewed scale facility, co-led with the municipal solid waste bailing transfer facility adjacent to the city's inert landfill and nearby city's municipal solid waste landfill to the northeast. Public Works Operations staff has been involved from the project research to design aspects, incorporating ongoing optional maintenance perspectives into design and specifications where appropriate. The city's councils have extensive experience with the city's landfill and associated facilities. I would like to introduce those who are here at the chamber tonight, as Mr. Scott Martin right there. And with that, I'll call in Scott Martin right there for a brief project presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Martin.
Good evening, council members. Thanks for your time. I had a, there it is. Sorry, wait, dim the light.
Yeah, shut the light, shut the lights.
So, just got a couple renderings here of the facility upgrades project. Essentially, the facility, as Nicholas indicated, was, the project itself is to kind of modernize the facility, enhance the level of service. So, one of the, the primary focus of the project was replacing the 20-year-old scale. And with that, we're providing a weather enclosure to help protect the longevity of that scale, as well as a new scale house, office, facilities, break room, and improve traffic circulation throughout the site, so allowing, allowing for reduced cross-traffic and just in general improvements to safety. So, any questions on the overall project itself?
Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll pass it back to you.
Nicholas Blackwell, anything else?
No, at this time, we don't have anything else.
So, did you want to give us one more time summary of what you're asking for this evening?
Oh.
Staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation.
Yeah. Any comments or questions?
I don't like this.
Seconded by Weigel, seconded by Mauch. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Bean is with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Yes, very good. Item 2.2, now we're going to authorize issuance and set sale of refunding improvement bond Series 2019B and sanitation reserve revenue bond Series 2019C bonds.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. So, the item, as Mr. Sandy read, that you have before you, there's two resolutions in front of you to authorize issuance of these two bonds, the first being 2019B, which is $22.9 million refunding improvement bond, and 2019C is $3.82 million sanitation reserve revenue bond. First of all, the refunding improvement bond is the financing mechanism that we use to finance the 2019 special assessment projects, and those bonds are to be paid back through the special assessments. The sanitation reserve revenue bond will be used to finance the sanitation system improvements that Nicholas just reviewed with you on the previous item for landfill scale and building rehab. Those bonds are to be paid back through the sanitation utility. What you have attached to your staff report are the resolutions that we would ask you to move forward to council for approval, which would authorize the issuance of these bonds, and to also set the sale date for October 21st, 2019, to be received in the office of Baker Tilly. Mr. Paul Simon is here just to go through with you just a brief summary of the pre-sale market outlook and what we're looking at with these bonds. So, I'll turn it over to him.
Thanks for coming, Mr. Simon.
Thanks for inviting me, committee. So, the pre-sale summary that is before you shows an offering of $22,950,000, your Series 2019B, that's the refunding improvement bonds, and the $3,820,000 Series 19C, your sanitation reserve revenue bonds. So, a couple of things that will happen before the sale on, in addition to this meeting. On October 7th, we'll have a rating presentation for Moody's. Your current credit rating is AA2, and we'll, we'll be looking to make a presentation to Moody's to, with regard to that rating, for their credit review of these bonds. Today is a better day for an issuer to be in the market than a month and a half ago by about a half a percent, by about 45 to 50 basis points, or a half of 1%. If you'll draw, I can draw your attention to the chart that's on page 1 of that pre-sale summary. The right-hand side of that chart tells the story, where we see rates back end of 18 and beginning of 19 in around the 4.5 to just about, well, 4.5 for the GO percent range, and today down below the 3% range. So, our, our estimate based upon the day that we ran your structures on the 2019B was a true interest cost of 2.52%, and on your 2019C, a 2.47% rate. So, it looks like the market is maybe going to give a little bit of that back and, over the next four weeks, but we don't expect significant change in the market over the next four weeks. So, timing on this issuance is, is good. Maybe I'll just step back and see if there's any questions. I'm happy to answer them, address any other issues.
Any questions about the revenue bonds or the current general obligation, the bond rating? I'll just make the motion for approval. Moving by Marshall, seconded by Doppler. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 2.3, plans and specifications for Project 8090 Sanitary Sewer on South 25th Street from Star Avenue to 45th Avenue South. Mr. Grasser, good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, President Sandy, members of city council. This is an area bounded essentially by 40th Avenue North, 45th Avenue, I'm sorry, 40th Avenue South, 45th Avenue South, east side of Columbia Road. We've had a number of conversations in this area. What has transpired is, as you recall, the plat that was approved a couple months back, and there's a copy in your, in your report, what was going to be commercial property from Columbia over to 25th has basically been changed, and now there's a row of residential homes along 25th as part of that subdivision approval and development. Because the original concept did not require sanitary sewer along that leg, no sanitary sewer was installed. So, now that there's residential lots there, they, we need to accommodate sanitary sewer service to those homes. So, the developer, under a three-way agreement, which means he'll pay the engineer, the consulting engineer, he'll pay the contractor, and he'll pay the city for our services, under that three-way agreement, they're going to hire a contractor and put that sanitary sewer in on their own. And so, at this point in time, we're looking for the approval of the plans and specs, and because all the financing and everything is being covered by others, this will be the last and only time that you see this particular item, but it's basically waters available, storm sewer is available, they were just lacking the sanitary.
Reason we don't have to put in sanitary sewer? Moving by Weber, seconded by Doppler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's Grasser, item 2.4, City and UND Public Transportation Service Integration Proposal. What's your feeling?
Just wanting our Facebook users to see what everyone else is seeing. Maybe. Okay, I'll try it in a minute.
Do you want to pull the PowerPoint up here?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, good.
This one?
Yeah, it's perfect.
Let me check that, okay.
Council President Sandy, members of city council. Dale and I are going to take team on this. It's really a complimentary moment to Dale and his team in public transportation. He's done a lot, you know, as well documented, the public transit facility that's under reconstruction as we speak, that's, that's been a big deal. In the budget that you're going to hopefully approve on Monday next, we're looking at taking over the balance of Dala Rider and Senior Rider and saving a significant, significant amount of money. And then, there's this integration with UND that we want to share with you, that, something that, that has been talked about for a long time, as long as I've been here, and it looks like we're getting near the altar on this. And so, I just want to give you an update, is what we're asking tonight for, is to approve the concept of integration, and that would be contingent and subject to further approval from UND, and also a final agreement that would be required and subject to city attorney final review and approval with UND as part of that, too. So, what we've heard from UND, and Dale will go through some of the concepts, is that they're, they're for the concept in, in general, and they just want to work through some of the specifics. And some of the feedback that we've gotten are not showstoppers, but there's three items in particular. One are, how do we, how are we going to review routes as, as time moves forward? And the answer to that is, like anyone else, we periodically update routes and make modifications, and we would do the same with UND. Number two, how are we going to handle complaints? We're going to handle complaints with UND, just like we do any other, anybody else in the system. What we do, and then finally, data handling, and of course, we're going to manage your data and, and who's coming and going, just like everyone else. So, really trying to synchronize what they're doing. And so, a little bit, those have been the, the three things that we've heard feedback on. We are going to plan to meet with, even though they generally are in favor, we've met with many of their vice presidents, President Winwall's have to weigh in, so we'll have a meeting here in the next week, and we'll get some further input on that. And then, hopefully by Monday, we'll have some further information to report on, on moving forward with this concept and all its particulars. And really, what Dale also has been worked on, another really plum, is that he's been able to procure funding for three buses that would basically help perform these routes. And really, we, if we're going to get ready for next summer, by next summer, for the fall semester of 2020, we need to start looking at it, or otherwise, we'll miss some marks on that. So, with that, Dale's going to, just kind of summarize some slides, and I think truly this is a win-win with UND and the City of Grand Forks, so it's kind of nice that we're near the finish line on this one. So, with that, I'd hand it over to Dale.
Thank you, Todd. President Sandy, members of the committee, just a quick few slides, we're going to do kind of an overview on this thing, but this was with our MPO office, SRF, our consultant that was working with us, and trying to get this project completed and moving forward. This is a big project with the university in regards to providing service for them. Let's see if I can get that moving. Again, as Todd had said, the overview and the concept that we had for this project, it's going to meet the university's needs, it's going to meet our needs. We're going to be looking at these routes that the university has with them, keeping in mind what the students are going to need so they can get around to where they need to go. Some of the routes that they currently have, they have the red, the blue, and the purple route that operate during the day in different locations, and then they have one-night route that they operate at night there. Very similar to ours right now, we've got nine routes during the day, and then we have two routes that operate at night. So, with that, some of the items that we had gone through, about the drivers' training, having more appropriate vehicles for what they've got, rather than having the 30-foot buses that they've got, or 35, or 40-foot buses that they've got, which are school buses that are probably about 30 years old right now. We're also going to be looking at cost stability for them, because their costs fluctuate. They have a rate that they pay for the rental of the vehicles, then anytime there's a major expense, such as an engine goes out or a transmission goes out, that is added on to the next quarter. So, they're never at a steady rate, like what we operate on. We'll be operating to try and make this a better integrated service with our services, as you're going to see, that you approved last week on this, was some of the costs that we're going to be charging the UND faculty. They'll ride in the university campus area, it'll be considered a fair, free area, and that's what the university wanted. Anytime that they leave outside of the campus area, then it will be $1.30 for the faculty and staff for riding the bus, and then 75 cents is what it costs for the students to ride. They just swipe their card through the fare box, we just tally all the numbers and give them to the university so that they know, they have two different pots that they're paying this particular money on. Again, you can see the cost allocation model that we use. It's the same cost allocation model we use with East Grand Forks that we are updating with them. You can see on the very first part of it, the total cost in our budget with operating, with driver costs, maintenance costs, and admin costs. And these are figured in by revenue miles, they're also figured in by peak operating costs, and our revenue hours. And that's how these all are broke down. So, every hour, every time that we spend on it, every mile that we put on a vehicle, it's all considered in, and the cost of operating of the service. And you can see some of the costs, if you look to the far right, you'll see the cost savings with university coming in. There'll be a cost savings of UND, or for Grand Forks, of the $186,000, and with East Grand Forks, a $50,000 savings in that portion of it. Again, this is the operating costs that we had for what UND would be operating, considering the costs that they would need to come up with. We had some discussion with some of the administrative costs that we have, and we reduced that down for them, because there really isn't going to be any more administrative stuff. They are going to be covering the costs and benefits that we would need for hiring of our drivers. They will be covering the cost for the additional insurance that would be needed, and they'll cover the cost of additional maintenance and fuel that would be needed. Other than that, there really is not a whole lot that they would end up having. Another portion of it shows that the cost of the vehicle that we would have for them, their cost for the local match portion that they're going to be paying after we got the $1.2 million that you approved here a couple of weeks ago, for us to accept, their local match cost will be around $330,000. We made an offer to them that they could pay that over a five-year period, and so that would be about $66,000 a year that they would reimburse us that local match cost on it. The vehicles then would be operated by city, maintained, issued, or insured and everything on that portion of it. Again, you can see another spot of our routes with the university, you can see where some of our purple routes go in and out, where the university routes run theirs, which is kind of a highlight on that portion of it. And some of the things that we had already discussed, about the student fares, what it would be for on the campus and off the campus area, this would add access to our services, that they would be able to transfer from one vehicle to another, and what we'd be looking for would be council approval after our discussion with the university president and staff here at the city, which we meet on September 11th, this Wednesday, to hammer out some of the finer details that we'd have. And just some of the other things we'd end up having is some public meetings that we'd be conducting with the university students and everything, so we'd make sure that they're well-integrated with us. This isn't a takeover, as most people are creating their service, we're providing the service that they would need, and it would help reduce some of their costs as far as having staff, and they would cover our costs, and we would be adding staff for operators. And again, some of the items that we went through, like you said, this project has been over the last 12 months with SRF, our MPO office, city staff, Todd and his office helping us out. It's been a long process. We have been going with this for about the last 10 years, and it's finally coming to fruition right now. So, Todd, anything else you have? Any questions that I made?
Questions, or are people interested in combining services with the university? Ms. Weber, move's approval? Seconded by Mauch. Any other comments?
You said you've been thinking about it for about 10 years. Is there a reason why right now it's not going to be until then?
We would, we'd been looking over the costs that they've had for their operation of their service, and they're beginning to see the cost, too. The one thing you've got to remember is that, as of July 1 of 2019, the federal government changed the rules on bus service and buses. Any private or university-owned outfit now has to have vehicle stabilization systems and three-point seatbelt harnesses on any new vehicle that's purchased. With the vehicles that the university will be looking at, whether they purchase them through the state or not makes no difference, because they now have to purchase them with the stabilization system and the three-point seatbelts on it, and that's going to cost them about $200,000 more than the average cost of a bus. So, it's, it's changed it quite a bit.
I think two component parts. Number one, it's been people. Number one, I would have to say Dale and his staff working the solution, and then subsequent UND and officials that are in place now, trying to find a way forward, and I think it was the right time, place, with the right people, and I think it really came together. And it's a little bit all of the wastewater interconnect, where, you know, we had a few times at it, and one time, the right time, place, and people all came together to make it happen. So, I think in a similar vein, and it gives you another story, keep working the solution, and at some point in time, if it's the right thing to do, it all comes together. I want to give Dale and his team a lot of credit in working really in good faith, and a genuine worthwhile matter with UND officials, and some of whom are new, too, and I think that was good to put some fresh eyes on it.
Yeah, of course.
And, so my understanding, just to be sure, essentially, this proposal can help UND and save UND money, it saves the city and East Grand Forks money as well, to incorporate?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any other comments or thoughts? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Very good, thank you. All your input was on that side.
Thank you.
Item 2.5, noisy party ordinance. Good evening, Mr. Swanson.
Good evening. I was able to get a draft put together for the committee's consideration. It is attached to your agenda. It is very similar to one that I drafted in June, however, I incorporated some of the legislative changes that were required as of August 1, and I also incorporated some of the changes that were required as a result of ordinances that you've previously adopted as a result of legislative changes. So, I'm here, I guess, to respond to any questions or concerns. I did reach out to Councilmember Weigel with a couple of questions. I don't know if my draft fit what you were looking for. I have retained the ability for the police department, or excuse me, law enforcement officials, whether it be UND officials, or Grand Forks police officers, or even potentially other law enforcement officers, to order people attending a loud party to disperse, and if they don't disperse, they also can be charged under the ordinance. And you will see that the first offense has a fine specified of $300 per incident or offense. If it's a multiple offense within a 12-month period of time, then that increases up to a higher, higher level. I don't know that I have any more comments about the draft, but I'd be happy to respond to any questions or concerns that any of the council members might have.
Mr. Swanson, I apologize, I missed your email. Son just didn't get back to me, and I apologize.
It's going right, right to junk, right?
Well, typically, no.
You're not alone.
You talked about the refusal to disperse. Can we keep that in there as a B misdemeanor?
We would have to break it out in a separate ordinance. As it is right now, I have not done that, but yes, you could.
Okay, because I think that's important for people that are refusing to leave after they've been ordered to by law enforcement. So, if we could break that off into a separate ordinance?
Okay.
I think that'd be important for law enforcement to have that tool that they can utilize.
And are you looking for a specified penalty to go along with that for a first-time offense, or?
I would just say a B misdemeanor, whatever penalty you and Chief Nelson find appropriate.
All right, we can do it. That will change the drafting, that will retain sections under current code, but yes, that can be done.
And then, with the changes in state law, how many infractions is it now for a B misdemeanor? Is it?
It's two within the 12-month period of time. And we've essentially incorporated that right in here, so.
Perfect. That, that was my only, I think it looks good. The only thing that I would like to see is if we can break that ordinance off for the refusal to disperse.
Okay, so what we'd have then is we'd have a loud-party violation ordinance, and we'd have a refusal or failure to disperse ordinance.
Perfect. Are there any other comments or questions, Mr. Weber?
If I could just follow up, that the refusal to disperse would have to be tied to a determination of a loud party. So, it's not, not just an officer would issue an independent order outside of a loud party, you want it related.
Right.
Okay, we can do that.
So, Mr. Swanson, do you think, do, do we approve this pending your revision for the city council meeting, or do you suggest we table for another two weeks?
That's up to you. I believe I can have that drafted and on the agenda for Monday. If the, if this body would like to have it, to look at it a little bit longer, then I'd suggest you maybe table it, but I'll defer to your judgment.
I don't see the need to table. I think Mr. Swanson will be able to get that done then.
I was more concerned about whether I could get a draft to you for this meeting than I was for the next meeting.
Sure. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Weber?
With the proposed revision, I'm inclined to support this. Chief Nelson, is there anything? Nope, I'll move approval then.
Hold on a second. Great. Moving by Weber, seconded by Weigel. Any other questions or comments?
I'll just add one thing. We are going to continue to have meetings. This is just the first step. Obviously, the ordinance will have to continue to have two readings, I believe, correct?
It would require two readings and publication.
Perfect. So, this is just the first step to get it going, and then, I know, working with Katie and Mr. Hager, that we're going to have some more community input with.
There's opportunity for more community public input. Yes, Ms. Mauch?
I wasn't able to attend, I know you had a meeting on it to get some input from people. Is this, I guess, the intent that you were, the two of you were after? Is this draft kind of encapsulating that? And then, is there any public input we should be aware of from your meeting?
I think, yeah, I think this draft incorporates what we were looking for. I think people that attended the award meeting were very open to the idea, and I think many of them supported it. I think others still have some comments or questions or concerns, but I think overall... I think others still have some comments or questions or concerns, but I think overall, a majority of them supported it that night, based on what I saw.
Yeah, Ms. Tucker?
I have to agree that it seemed like overall there was support. There's definitely a lot more conversations that need to be had, but they are not specific to this particular ordinance. It has more to do with rentals in general. And so, definitely, Councilman Weigl is right. We will be having more conversations as we move forward to just continue making our neighborhoods a nice place to live.
Any other comments, Mr. Swanson?
No, thank you.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close sign. Thank you, Mr. Veen, motion carries unanimously. Item 2.6, discussion about tiny homes. Mr. Gangler, good evening.
Yes. Good evening, President Sandy and committee members. After discussing this presentation with a few council members, we thought it would be good to bring it to you. The very same presentation was also given to the Planning and Zoning Commission, so it's just sort of an overview of one way that these tiny homes are being built in certain areas and it's just meant to sort of generate some questions and some discussion and we'll see where it goes. I have Cody Bartholomew here. First, Cody has a brief video to watch of a tiny home development in Reno, Nevada. And after that, then I'll turn it over to Cody and talk more specifically about some of the building plans and just questions in general.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Gangler.
How did 10 tiny luxury homes end up in downtown Reno?
We build tiny homes because we like doing things that people tell us can't be done.
Welcome to tiny town.
How did 10 tiny luxury homes end up in downtown Reno?
We build tiny homes because we like doing things that people tell us can't be done.
Welcome to tiny town.
Let's give her one more chance. I'm sure they'll get it. I've got a good feeling here.
So, this bear walks into a bar.
Turning what?
Maybe while they're working on it, Mr. Bartholomew, you could just give us a synopsis of what this video was going to say.
I'll do my best.
All right, I'll.
The video is good because it was, it would give you a feel of the size of the homes.
How did 10 tiny luxury homes end up in downtown Reno?
A project of this nature.
We build tiny homes because we like doing things that people tell us can't be done.
Three or four years ago. And their particular project was 10 units and it was like an urban Reno project.
Turning what used to be a parking lot into 10 tiny homes has been truly amazing. My new tiny house, it fits me and the dogs perfectly.
What I'm looking to do is I can fit like four units on a corner lot in Grand Forks.
Reno, Nevada, known as the biggest little city in the world, is living up to its reputation with a new tiny home development that's big on design but leaves a small footprint. This is tiny town, a planned community of 10 energy-efficient houses. Each one measures around 650 square feet and has two floors. They're designed to be compact without sacrificing creature comforts you'd expect to find in a full-size house.
They would be stick-built or SIPs panel construction.
Each comes with a washer and dryer, air conditioner, a kitchen with slick appliances.
We're having some difficulty raising the maps as well here, I'm sorry.
Turn it off and turn it back on. It's always user error, I know this. So, Mr. Gangler, in general, if Mr. Bartholomew were to build multiple tiny houses on one city residential lot, what sort of variances would he need in order to do that? I mean, there are certain square footage sizes of lots that we have, certain side yard, front and backyard setbacks that would have to be met or provide a variance, correct?
Correct. And we had some of those brief discussions, but we've looked at where they've done this elsewhere and there seems to be some, not hangups, but some questions and issues just about zoning in general. I know that there was an article in the Herald about a week ago that talked about some places in Minnesota and I think other places that were dealing with it. So, I think a couple of different ways that we need to look at it. On the one hand, we always talk about density and most familiar with when we talk about apartment complexes, we talk about 16 units per acre, 20 units per acre. So, I think some of that has to do with the numbers of homes on like a given lot or a given area in terms of density. So, I think there's things to look at. Building setbacks can be accommodated one way or the other. Utilities, all the infrastructure. Parking seems to be one of the questions as well in terms of, they won't have a standard like two-stall garage that your typical single-family home may have. So, those are some of the things that I think we need to take into account. Also, another question is in terms of utilizing this type of housing for infill, let's say, versus a new development. And just so everybody is aware that these are, you know, stick-built homes, they're not the same types of tiny homes that we see on HGTV or whatever the channel is that shows the tiny homes essentially on wheels that are basically almost like a motorhome or a camper. So, that's not, you know, what we're talking about. And then the question, I guess, of affordability comes into play in terms of where these, you know, where these tiny homes can be built versus what the price point is. So, those are things that I think are still on everyone's minds and I don't know if you wanted to speak to that or.
Do you guys have any questions, I guess?
So far, this presentation is going great. Actually, in general, what sort of, what sort of direction are you looking for? Are you wondering if the city council is in general supportive of you trying to move forward to build some tiny houses?
Sure. I guess today, yeah, I mean, I was invited here. It would have been a lot better if the video would have played, obviously. I've actually got some site plans and stuff on here that aren't showing up either, so.
So, I'm sorry if I'm leading this conversation, but let's say, Mr. Gangler, let's say that Mr. Bartholomew has a specific lot in mind. What would be the process for him to move forward with that? Would we start with a neighborhood meeting to talk to people or are we, what are your thoughts on?
I think it definitely a neighborhood meeting as we typically do. We also need to look at what I just talked about in terms of the actual current zoning ordinances, where that fits in with the proposed. I think they could happen simultaneously in terms of at least presenting something to a given neighborhood, just to get that feedback.
So, would you go to planning and zoning in parallel to doing a neighborhood meeting and go to planning and zoning with the, here are whatever adjustments need to be made? Or would you want to come to this body first to have a general discussion about what do you think the city council thinks should happen? And then give him that information and have him try to work a deal and then go to the planning?
I think that course could be taken to make sure that you folks get, you know, get that firsthand knowledge of what would be proposed and then with that direction, as he said, then a follow-on neighborhood meeting perhaps.
What was your timeline? Were you trying to get something built this fall? Where is September, right?
Right, not at this point.
Okay. So, we have a strategic planning meeting on September 30th. Maybe we could have a broad discussion about tiny homes and our thoughts at that time and then we can give you some relevant information and help you move forward. Because I, now that, I'll stop talking. What do other people feel, how do they feel about tiny houses and thoughts? Yes?
I'll take over and ask some questions. Sure. Excited that this conversation's finally coming forward, so thanks for doing that. Can you give us an idea if we had a lot in the downtown core area, 50 or 75-foot front, can you give us an idea of how tiny homes would fit on such a lot, if that's even possible? And like, what's the size of them in terms of square footage and possible price? If you could talk about those things, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, our current plan for a corner lot, the lot size was like 100 by 140. So, if you had 50-foot fringes, I would need probably two lots to make it happen for a four-unit deal. These, the homes, they aren't row houses. It was four houses and they share kind of a courtyard. Say there could be a fire pit or something in the middle, a patio. And then there's a walkway to a shared driveway and then the four single-stall garages are As far as price point?
Connected to the driveway?
Yep.
Right.
Yep.
Not attached to any of the homes themselves?
Nope.
Okay.
So, it'd be like detached garage and like I said, if it was four units, there'd be four single-stall garages.
An approximate size of these homes and the price point?
The sizes are about 20 feet by 28 feet, about 785 square feet. Depending on where, depending on lot price, like the biggest question mark is the lot price, but for the lots that I have picked out and a current like verbal agreement on, the price point would be under $200,000 a unit.
100 to 200,000?
Under 200,000.
Under 200,000.
Yep.
And these are? These are one-bedroom?
They're two-bedroom.
Two-bedroom?
Yep.
Well, I hope that we can get the presentation working either tonight or at some meeting soon and I look forward to continuing the discussion on September 30th.
Any other comments or thoughts about tiny homes?
Just a question for Mr. Gangler.
No, yeah.
I don't know a lot about tiny homes within communities. I guess when I've seen information about tiny homes, it's been more in rural kinds of areas and that kind of thing. So, I'm curious what the pros and cons might be that we'll need to be considering in terms of, you know, imagining that there might be some pushback from neighborhoods in terms of having the tiny homes in more densely set together. Any thoughts on considerations that you think we should be made aware of or that we should be thinking about?
Well, I think you kind of hit it on the head in terms of maybe certain sensitivities to certain neighborhoods. Since we really haven't reached out to the public yet, we don't know exactly what those concerns would be, but as we do with apartments and other things that are new to the neighborhood. So, I think staff, we're trying to get our arms around where this fit would be. You know, there's a neighborhood area that Cody has been talking about, but I think we need to look at how this fits in with the existing character of the neighborhoods, whether it's a, you know, a single infill or if it's going to be a multi-building area. But I think that's the biggest thing is to really understand how it fits in with an existing neighborhood.
Yeah, Ms. Mock?
So, when you're talking about this, you're talking, you said it was stick-built, so it's not modular, so it's an actual home that would be for sale? Is that correct? And so, then it would be privately owned, just like any other single-family home?
Yep. The plan, it would probably need a condo association for lawn care, some removal for that shared driveway and things like that, but yeah, it would be divided into four lots.
So, you'd be looking to sell it, but perhaps there, you talked about like a common fire pit area or something like that. That would maybe be like a condo-type situation?
Yep. I think summer removal in that core area, the common area, would be a shared cost.
Okay. And so, then essentially, when, if you thought of it as like a regular lot that a single-family home would be on, you're thinking that you would drive in the middle to get maybe back to the garages? Is that?
Yeah, so right there, you see a driveway in gray.
Okay.
And then there's four connected single-stall garages. So, each one of those homes would have a garage stall.
And then in terms, I mean, we've been talking for a long time about ways to offer affordable housing options. In a case like this, I would assume, Mr. Gangler, that they'd be able to divide the cost of the lot. Would they be able to cost share specials or do we have an idea of how special assessments might work?
That's something that still definitely needs to be looked into, but just sort of like, as Cody mentioned, you know, a condo declaration or something, it happens in various, whether it's homes that level or in an actual condo building, that those fees and those assessments are typically spread. So, those are things that we would look into.
Sure. And then, but in terms of like neighborhood development, you'd be talking about essentially people who own their own unit and take care of it and maintain it accordingly.
Right. That appears to be the plan would be, you know, homeownership versus developing these as rental units.
Sure.
Two other quick things.
So, here we're seeing four units. For this to be financially feasible for you, is one of these sufficient to kind of run a pilot or do you, in Reno, they had 10. Are you needing multiple sites like this in order to be viable?
I like the project of this size right now to ease into it, I guess. I have two corner lots that size kind of picked out. If the first four sell in a hurry, then I would do it a second time. And then at that point, I'd be open to more units if there were infill projects or the cities had some lots available.
And not to give away too much of the excitement when we do get to see the presentation, but could you give us some idea, is there energy efficiency? What are the advantages? What are the attractions of a tiny home?
Yeah, I mean, definitely, well, they refer to them as a glove house because they just fit. I mean, there's not a lot of unused or extra space. We're looking at SIPs panel construction, so they'd be structurally insulated panels, so fully insulated walls and roof and it's just a lower carbon footprint. I know some people are looking to downsize, some people are looking to go green and this is a perfect example. There'd be heat pumps, there'd be air-cooled heat pumps and very, very energy efficient.
Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Marshall?
Just another question. So, you know, along the lines of the questions that Ms. Mock was asking, each individual or each homeowner would own the home and the land that it sits on? And then there would be common land in the middle that is not divided up between the homeowners? Is that correct or?
Yeah, I guess.
And then, you know, and then my question about that would be, would there be typically then a homeowners' association and rules and fees may be attached to a homeowners' association?
Yes. Yep, for sure.
Great. So, are you looking for more direction from us than that or?
Council President Sandy. We talked earlier today, Council President Sandy and I and others, you know, the deferred special assessments are going away and that was part of our trying to make lots more affordable. And certainly, we've increased the length of infrastructure costing out to 25 years. We've reduced some of it down to 1 and 1/2% to 1%. And so, I think what we do is we'll give, as part of our community priorities briefing, we'll include this. And so, not only will we include this, but we'll say, what do we need to do to make it a reality? And number two, where would it fit well? And so, what we hear today is that people are going to be generally for affordable housing and I think the key will be how are we going to get there? What do we need to do? And then, most importantly, where do people want to make this happen? So, we will flesh that out further on the 30th of September so that you can have some, like most things, the details will matter on something like this. And so, we'll work more of the details for you on, for the 30th.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Veen. Any other questions for us? Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gangler. Okay. Moving right along, item 2.7, ISS HC LLC Integrated Steel Solutions request for a five-year pilot, which for those of you that don't know is payment and move taxes. Mr. Brooks, good evening.
Thank you, Councilman President, or Council President Sandy. Today, we have a request before us for, from ISS HC LLC Integrated Steel Solutions for a five-year pilot. I want to just walk through a little bit the reason that. Um, I wanna just walk through a little bit, uh, the reason that we have this before us. Typically this would be a newer or expanding business exemption request, which, uh, we typically give a hundred eighty, sixty, forty, twenty. Um, in this case, they'd been looking for a building. They found one that it, uh, had been started in town. It was under, uh, was being listed, uh, for sale. Uh, it, it would fit their purposes and as opposed to starting new construction, um, they thought this building does work for them and as opposed to keeping a building vacant and half-built out, uh, north of Simplot, um, which is where we've, uh, the city has put considerable amount of investment into lift stations and, and, uh, the infrastructure out there is one of our strategic infrastructure growth areas. Um, they, they're looking to locate up there. Um, the application talks about the number of jobs they'd be adding eighteen up to twenty-four by the fifth year. Um, it's a, it's a great business. Um, uh, the owner is here to talk a little bit more about the, uh, specifics to the business, but I just wanted to talk through a little bit as to why we, uh, were looking at this product. A state code wouldn't allow, uh, the newer expanding in this case, just because the building had started and I don't think it was for the reasons as, as we have before us. So, uh, with that, I will introduce John Miscavich, uh, the owner of the, the new business and, uh, let him talk a little bit about the specific business itself unless you have any other questions on the location at all.
I was gonna request, can I be recused? Can somebody make a motion?
Move to, to recuse President Sandy.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm recused.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak here. Uh, a little bit about the business, is it, uh, a pretty innovative process. We're gonna, uh, manufacture light gauge wall panels and components. Uh, and what that is, is take a traditional stick frame building, uh, and basically swap the pieces out, uh, with cold rolled steel. And what this allows us to do is build structures up to ten stories, so, uh, we can roll pretty heavy steel. And, uh, it, uh, in, in the past, most of these buildings have traditionally been a post-tension concrete block and plank or heavy structural steel. So it allows us to go into a metropolitan market and convert more or less, uh, heavy superstructures to a much lightweight, uh, a lighter weight product, uh, that installs that one-third the time. So, um, it's, it's a pretty amazing product and, uh, we feel there's a, 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 a pretty wide marketplace out there. We're one of fourteen or fifteen firms in the entire country that have these machines and, uh, everyone I talk to, uh, tells us nothing but great success with them. And, uh, with this also, we're looking at building bathroom pods, which would be, uh, fully finished bathrooms, uh, that we would deliver to the hotels that we would be building around the country. So a bathroom would come in, it would be craned into place, uh, set in its spot and then the building erected around it. So, um, yeah. Any other questions?
Um, bathrooms, kitchens?
Uh, some kitchens have been done. Uh, they have not been installed yet, not by us, but by, uh, another firm. Uh, so I think just the possibilities are endless with this. We can prefabricate exterior wall sections with the windows installed, uh, exterior cladding applied. Um, but, um, yeah, just a lot of innovation with it.
I, I'd love to move approval. I'm not sure, can we move approval?
We agree.
I'll move approval.
Awesome.
Is there, is there any other discussion?
I can call the question as the person who made the motion. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion passes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Last item on the agenda, the syringe service program. Good evening.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm well. Council President Sandy and members of the committee, I'm Michael Doolittle, CPOD Response Project Coordinator at the Health Department. I come to you today with, uh, to update you on a proposal to operate a syringe service program at the Health Department and to seek your concurrence with our decision to operate a syringe service program. As you may recall from my presentation in August, Grand Forks Public Health is seeking to start a syringe service program in response to a seventy-eight percent increase in the number of new hepatitis C cases diagnosed in Grand Forks County between twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. The goal will be to reduce the incidence of hepatitis C transmission and provide better engagement with people who use substances. As a refresher, an infographic is included in your packet and is available on the screen. The program would be operated out of the Public Health Department in the County Office Building and would provide twelve hours of services per week. There would be two staff for the program, a zero point four FTE nurse who would, uh, who has been identified from within the department as someone interested in, um, assisting the program and a zero point five FTE harm reduction advocate. At the last meeting, I laid out a timeline, uh, for our role, uh, for, for our rollout plan. In addition to, um, briefing the City Council in August, we did, uh, go before the County Commission, um, in August as well to brief them on our plan. Uh, in the meantime, we have met with Chief Nelson, uh, UND, UPD Chief Plummer, Sheriff, uh, Sheriff Schneider and State's Attorney Womsted regarding the program. We've also met with staff, uh, from the Northeast Human Service Center and Spectra Health, uh, to discuss how we can connect clients with the services and their respective programs, um, with the fewest barriers possible. We held a community meeting on August fourteenth at the Public Health Department. The meeting was well advertised with a press release and media coverage as well as advertising through community event boards and paid social media advertising. Sixteen people attended, uh, over three hundred viewed on Facebook Live, uh, KVRR and the Grand Forks Herald were in attendance. One comment card was received advocating for a different location for the program. Uh, five unique commenter, uh, commenters posted on Facebook in support of the program, two in opposition. No other letters, emails or phone calls were received, uh, providing feedback on the program directly to me. The program plan is available online through the Grand Forks Public Health website. The proposed syringe service program was well covered in the media with seven media interviews granted and twelve stories round, including support from the Grand Forks Herald Editorial Board. As I previously mentioned, the program would offer, uh, would operate twelve hours per week, uh, with the proposed hours, including services four days of the week, um, following the models of the other programs in the state. Um, we're unable to operate in the evening because of the hours of the building, but we tried to space out our hours as, um, as well as we could, um, to try and serve clients, um, uh, at multiple opportunities during the week. The budget would be approximately sixty-four thousand dollars, dependent on staff, fringe and benefits, um, and that would be covered with, uh, federal funds and private funds. No state or federal funds can be used to purchase injecting equipment. We have been offered a five thousand dollar private grant to cover the cost of injecting equipment, uh, for the first year. And additional federal opioid funds are anticipated in October of twenty nineteen to cover a year of operation. No city funds are being requested for the operation of the program. We have, uh, made an update to our transaction model and, um, in the program plan in response to feedback that we have received. Uh, we have sought to better define the transaction model, um, since that was a source of many public questions. Uh, best practice is to provide syringes based on need, but according to the North American Syringe Exchange Network, most syringe service programs in the United States operate on a one-for-one-plus model, which means that clients can receive more than one syringe returned, um, per, um, per syringe provided, or more than one syringe provided per syringe returned within a criteria, which is, um, on the slide. Uh, for most clients, the program will operate on a one-for-one-plus model, but we would like to keep exemptions in there, um, for clients in good standing with the program. That means they've completed HIV and hepatitis C testing and are consistently returning used, um, injection equipment, equipment if they have a barrier due to, um, disability, transportation or distance to the program. Returning to our timeline, our next step will be to request your, uh, concurrence with our decision to operate a syringe service program. If approved by the council, we would seek concurrence from the County Commission as well, um, this month. After that, we would submit our program to the North Dakota Department of Health for approval and we would anticipate program start in October of twenty nineteen. With that, I ask for your concurrence and I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions you may have.
Comments or questions, Mr. Weigle?
I'm in general support of the program and I understand why you guys are doing it and I think that's important. Um, the issue that I have is with where those non-return syringes are going to end up. And you said that somebody could, so it's a one, one-for-one or one plus one?
One-for-one plus.
So if I bring you two syringes, I can get four.
All right. Going back to the slide, um, if you bring one to five syringes, you'd receive up to ten. Um, ten is what's generally in a, in a bag.
So I could bring one syringe and I could get ten?
Yes. Um, you would also be provided with a Sharps container for, um, proper disposal, both, um, a Sharps container, um, like a one-quarts Sharps container as well as a pocket-sized Sharps and container, um, so you could dispose of, um, the Sharps yourself.
And that's, that's the issue that I'm having is somebody brings in one and they get ten, or if they bring in five, they get twenty. I, I'm curious about the safety of where are these going to end up? I've been to Eugene, I've been to Seattle and there's syringes everywhere. You can't walk downtown in any of those communities without seeing syringes laying on the, on the sidewalk, in the gutter. I don't wanna see that happening in Grand Forks. Those are my concerns.
Uh, I think a more, maybe in this instance, a more, um, or better comparison would be, uh, the programs in Mandan and Bismarck as well as Fargo and Minot and they haven't seen any major issues in the community. Um, what we are providing is an opportunity for people to dispose of syringes properly, whereas we don't have that available right now. Um, and actually you can obtain syringes, uh, you can purchase them online. Um, you know, I, I tested it and I was able to purchase syringes off Amazon, no problem. Um, so it's actually providing, uh, a mechanism to return syringes, um, that may be used instead of, um, being discarded. So, um, I understand your concern and that's something that we've, um, we've kinda debated about and that's why we opted to modify our, uh, model a little bit, but our goal is to get as many people back in and then that's an opportunity to, to educate about how to, um, return syringes. So, um, I guess.
Any other comments? Moved by Weber, is there a second? Second by Dockler, is there a comment?
Yeah, just a, a comment. Uh, you know, I, I think that this, I'm very much in support of this, of this program and I, I think that it provides another piece to the puzzle that we've been working on within the call to action, um, in terms of addressing substance abuse issues within our community. To me, the, the beauty of this is that it brings people in and that it gets, gets that opportunity to get people in the door and to provide that kind of counseling and, and options for people, uh, regarding treatment and, and support. So, uh, just, I wanted to add that vote of, of confidence for this.
Thank you.
Ms. Marshall, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. I, I was, uh, pretty, uh, apprehensive when, when I first, uh, learned about this, uh, program. I am supportive of it. I'm a little bit concerned about the syringes as well. Share Mr. Weigle's concerns, um, and so, and I know we talked a, a little bit about this last time you provided some information to us. It would be great if we could track how many syringes we're handing out to which individuals and I know that we try to have an semi-anonymous system. There's gotta be a way to give somebody a number and say, hey, number forty-two keeps bringing in one syringe and taking, taking ten every week, so that even then we can educate them on the importance of bringing the syringes back.
So to clarify on how the program would work, um, the requirement is that it's an anonymous program, but that doesn't mean that it isn't, that we aren't able to track people, um, or track, um, what we're receiving and what's going out. So when a, um, when an individual, um, enrolls in the program, they're assigned an ID number, um, that's based on, um, kind of some random demographics, like their mother is maiden name, um, their month and year of birth, um, and then a couple other items. Um, and that's the number that they would use, um, subs, or during subsequent visits and it would allow us to document on that individual.
Great. So you are gonna be tracking some of those metrics?
Yes. So we would know how many provided and how many returned, um, you know, for all the clients that we are serving within this syringe service program.
Are you, are you going to semi-annually come or annually come and give us a, a rendition of what's going on and how we're doing?
So we're required to report to the state on a semi-annual basis about, um, the num, or the services provided, the number of syringes provided and returned, um, and then, um, other services provided and, um, we could easily come in, um, and present to you as well.
Even just giving us the same information would, I think it would be important for all of us to know. So, any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Phelan, I, we have a speaker card and this, uh, person's been here for an hour and thirty-five minutes. I think we should invite, uh, Mr., well, Craig. I don't know if that's Mister or just Craig to, uh, to come up. Please, uh, introduce yourself and, and, uh, what can we do for you, sir?
Uh, I've been speaking on these meth labs that, uh, government-run and also by adults and you can see there's thirteen deadly poisons to make methamphetamine. I've, uh, documented those with the FBI. Bob Wilson in Salt Lake City, he's my contact, been talking to those people, sending them all the stuff that I speak about here and I keep doing meetings. My next one's gonna be in Delaware on some nuclear stuff. So Phil, uh, bear with me, go through the pictures here, turn the next page. We got meth labs on corporate farms and ranches, all no trespassing. You can't get on these ranches for nothing. Uh, they're highly secured. Uh, that's, uh, all the foreign sectors. I've, I've hit South Dakota already, Sturgis. If you could give me a little extra time, we'll get through this quick. Here's the other locations, SFFC, stations in the mountains and the hills, landfills are common, uh, definitely offshore oil rigs. I've already got confirmed on that. I don't know if you've seen that Deep Water Horizon movie? That was a meth lab, wasn't an oil problem that went up. Uh, all military bases are harboring cocaine and heroin for sales to our kids and, well, no, my kids, I don't have any, I never will, uh, but your children, uh, so, uh, not good. You know, I mean, what are they thinking? Plus there's, uh, information on them protecting all the plants down in South America to process all this stuff. Our army's down there protecting that. Not good. I don't think that's what our taxpayers are for. Indian reservations, meth labs, and then the funding, all your shelters, all these bunk beds, that's five hundred dollars a night to the taxpayer and they're full all the time, whether they're full or not. So that's the funding of all this meth lab. Then we got chemical warfare trains. They're called asset switches. They'll park ammonia next to bleach, hit it with a missile, all our livestock will be dead. And then we have the hot shot train, harboring nuclear devices and stationary nuclear devices in these containers that can be put anywhere, Mayor. They go, they go on a semi-truck, they can go on a train. So they're, they're just looping around and I don't think those launch, launch in our defense. I don't think freight trains launch. And you got the cell sites in line for that. I think I got that number pretty correct. I've been thanked on that issue as well. Gas stations are targets for missiles. You know, that would enhance a blast, of course, and all those missiles are, uh, are gonna be launched under zip code as part of the code, encrypted zip code. That's the Vulcan Roman government for you. I got blood work going to the FBI. I'm hoping we get blood testing going on schoolyards. Uh, the burgundy color is toxic blood. It's, uh, actually you're exiled, you're a felon, uh, altered. It's something that the female has going on. I'm sorry ladies, but I do have to tell the truth. And then the last page is that, uh, female indicting little device up there in the sky that tracks the, uh, glass domes that we're living under. Um, I don't know if you've broken down the American flag and done the star things, but we're under two hundred and fifty glass domes that kinda magnify the view and, uh, they're enslaving men and I'm not gonna let this happen to me, ladies. So that blood type will, will answer to all that question and the force of, of the officer having to carry the gun for the female. I appreciate you letting me speak and, uh, hopefully I have good luck with the ocean thing. You know, they're gonna nuke the ocean with these containers and then we won't have any rain cycle, you won't see any snow, completely eliminate our food source. You know, and that ocean is the rain cycle. You know how it works, Mayor. Yeah. Thank you very much for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. And Chief, I might have some DOI information for you, so I'll try to drop that off before I get out of town. That'll get me out of here safely. Guys, have a good night. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Phelan, you'd also- Mr. Phelan, we'd also, under new business or other business, had asked if Mr. Gangler could give us a quick rundown of Southern Estates 12 replat. This item will be coming to city council next week. It was voted on and moved by planning and zoning last week.
If I could have Greta come out here, I'm still having some difficulties getting into the HiDrive.
See, just wonder.
I can pull them up in the back and play them on the front.
Okay.
If you just want to tell me when to go to the next one?
Yeah, it's been asked of us to bring this back to you. As was stated in the email, the Planning and Zoning Commission just recently reaffirmed their original vote on the plat to not have it be a dedicated roadway and have it as a private easement. Of course, the city council had voted contrary to that, so now it's coming back from planning and zoning to be on the city council meeting. But some of the, as, we'll get the maps up for discussion purposes, but some of the areas that staff has looked at in terms of, should it be private or public? And we did look at the significance of it being a signalized intersection, heavily traveled roadway being South Columbia. The property owners are going to be special assessed for the construction, just as any other assessment process works. So at least one of the trains of thoughts is that because it is at this major intersection or busy intersection of Columbia Road, we felt that by dedicating it to the public, the city is going to be able to maintain much more control over that roadway, both east and west. The Westlake going into the Southern Estates, or the Westerly Development, of course, that's a public street. So that is, we just think, you know, it's going to look, and it was stated at the last council meeting, it's going to look like a public street. It could function like a public street. As we get some of the drawings up, both on the north and south side of 43rd Avenue is going to be all commercial development, so we can assume over time, a full buildout is going to generate enough traffic to where I think having that being dedicated and basically under city control, I think is better than allowing it to stay a private drive, where in the past we had issues of, at some point, private drives can also then be requested to turn back to the public when those private developers are no longer willing and able to maintain and function. In terms of snow removal, yes, it would be the city's responsibility, just as the street out in front of, in front of your house, or any house. So that's, unless other staff have others to add, that's at least from the staff perspective coming out of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Mr. Weber?
Let me try to summarize my memory and some of the key points and check this out with you. So originally, we have a development along Columbia there, and originally the intention had been for a road to cut through into the neighborhood, making this accessible, more of a walkable neighborhood. But the neighbors requested that this not be accessible to the neighborhood. They wanted this closed off. So at that point, we went along, and this is not going to connect to any other public road.
Correct.
So we have a long parking lot, along two or three, depending on how the plating process ends up, two or three lots, a long parking lot with medical offices, some other office space, and some retail. Is that an adequate summary of what we're looking at? And so there will be access to this parking lot from both the north and the south. And the reason for this road, as I'm understanding it, is so that there could be a traffic light on Columbia, anticipating that there would be a lot of otherwise dangerous left-hand turns going in, coming out of this midpoint of the parking lot. Have I summarized any of that correctly at this point? And the last thing I'll add is that Planning and Zoning has twice, as you noted, voted against this being a public, a city-owned road, and we, the council, at our one-shot at this, voted to make it a public road. We contradicted the recommendation from Planning and Zoning.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Grasser, something to add?
Maybe. I don't know if I can clarify or confuse, but it's hard to know how all the pieces might fit together, so I'm just going to start maybe going through some of the pieces, and you can decide your own cells what's relevant or not. But going back in time, I'm going to say in the mid-2000s, when development was occurring on the east side of 25th Street, you can see where 25th is up there. Originally, the concept was that Star Avenue was going to go through, 43rd Avenue was going to go through, and 45th Avenue was going to go through. Now, those are only concepts at that point in time. Obviously, the area to the east developed, single-family, it's fully developed now, and has been for a bit of time now. When 43rd kind of first hit our radar, I think we had, what I perceived anyway, we had one property owner that was looking at developing that whole piece between 40th and 45th Avenue South. The reason it ended at 45th is between 45th and 47th, that was developed a little bit earlier by another developer, medical-related. In the course of those conversations, or prior to that then, as we were developing Columbia Road, we tried to fit accesses, access control to whether areas had been platted or not platted. Make a long story short, Star Avenue has a median through it today. 43rd Avenue South has a three-quarter intersection in it today. Again, when the development came through and went through planning and zoning and city council, we talked about then, the developer identified that it was mission-critical, for lack of a better term, that 43rd be signalized. And so city council, we went along with signalizing 43rd. It made sense, the way the traffic kind of patterns are setting up out there. Again, that can go, we can signalize either public or private, so that can happen either way. I think it's certainly a valid point that it looks like a street. However, up to this point, we've set up the private development to work as a, as that street being non-public. What that means is that we are right now not planning on bringing water down 43rd, or sanitary sewer down 43rd. As you would typically do that, we've actually made arrangements through the development process that sanitary sewer and water are coming in basically from the south into the north to get at that site. Areas north of 43rd will come in through Star Avenue and whatnot, and areas to the south of 43rd will come off of 45th, if that makes sense. The only public utility that we're really looking at putting in on 43rd Avenue is the storm sewer. And the reason that that's public is because the storm sewer provides drainage for this subdivision, plus the backyard drainage for those single-family homes that you see lined up on 25th. And so that's planned to be public. Again, that can be public whether the road is public or private or not. If we are making it public, as I noted, the planning and zoning, we do need to put a cul-de-sac at the end that facilitates turnaround for fire, sanitation, snow plowing operations are a big one. We don't want equipment to have to stop and back up like this. They make the standard cul-de-sac. If it were private, it could be configured differently. So anyway, that's kind of where we are right now. We have things set up to be private, but it wouldn't take too much to shift them over to be on the public side. So really, it's a policy decision on city council. It can go, you know, I can set up pretty good arguments either side of that, and to me, they kind of counterbalance.
If I could, let me try to summarize one final point, and then I think I can finally get to a question. When city council voted on this, I normally am inclined to support committee recommendations. And so this is one time where I went against the committee recommendation, because I was convinced by city staff that we've had these private roads turned public in the past. It was expensive to retrofit them, to make them fit with city code, and the public always thought of them as public roads anyway, as city-owned roads. So we kind of, we're left holding the bag, and instead of doing that further down the road, we should do that now. My understanding is P and Z, Planning and Zoning, has now recommended no road there, and simply having the plating line divide this, these two lots, well, we currently have two lots, it's going to go into three lots. But the current recommendation from P and Z is to go no road and just let them have one continuous parking lot. Am I understanding that correctly?
No, I think the proper motion, they just don't want to have it dedicated, so without dedicated, then it would just be a private, a private road easement.
And if it's not dedicated, then there wouldn't be a traffic light there?
No, it'd still have one.
Because we can signalize a private or a public road.
We did that by the university, the Bowden Apartment. They're just currently putting in that stoplight.
Sure. On backwater, but we're, right. So the decision that we'll be asked to make next week is simply, there's going to be a signal there. We're going to have a road that's going to look like a city-owned street, although it's not going to have the regular infrastructure. It's going to have storm sewers is the only infrastructure. That storm sewer and the price of this road will all be fully assessed to these developers, to the new property owners, well, to the property owners, not to residential property owners in the area.
Only a minor correction of that, the storm sewer is going to be provided by the developers. There's not going to be any special assessments to that one that I'm aware of.
Okay. And so our decision that we'll be asked to make next week is public or private? Thanks for, yes, Mr.?
Council President Sandy and Councilmember Weber. I think, when was that council? I got up and talked on behalf of Polk Works, because they weren't here. I just, I've taken these calls before, in a previous life, and what generally happens is people make lots of promises, and they don't really quite come through with it, and so they call the city, and generally, when in doubt, we just go in and do it. And my concern with this is going to be an intersection, and we're going to come through with a snowplow on Columbia Road, there's going to, in a snow event, right? And there's going to be lots of snow that's going to build up, and they're going to come ask us to remove it, because they're going to say that snow's coming from Columbia Road. And we're going to put operators in really challenging situations, and supervisors. So the clearer we can make it, the better off we are. And I just know in developments where even the, I'll call it the Lithia Ford area, those are private streets, private utilities, and probably around 20 years thereafter, we took those streets over with the utilities. And I just, when I look at this street, it just looks awfully familiar to me. And then what happens generally, as simple as this is, okay, we're going to have an intersection with a signal, and our streets can look nice and well-bladed, well-deiced, if you will. And then we're going to have the private side. That's going to look a lot different, and people are going to be sliding through the intersection, they're going to be wondering what's going on, they're going to call the city. We're going to go out there and do some stuff, because we're there, we respond. And I'm just trying to make operations as smooth as possible. And I know, here's the other comment we get from people that, you know, made comment is, say you're, you own property there because you developed something there. They're going to say, well, I'm paying taxes, as though we do get street department assistance, just like we get police and fire, so why am I not getting street department access, we'll say, on this street, because we're paying lots in taxes? So you just, we enter into all these conversations, and we certainly don't want to blame, because the city council made us do it. We don't ever do that, or we shouldn't do that. And we just get in awkward situations. So the clearer you can do things, the better off we are. And I know it's more work for us to do, and maybe there's a principle in here too, but I'm just worried about a January night where things are tough. And just so you all know, when in doubt, we take action and make things happen for people, whether it's, because it's reasonable for us to help citizens out. So that was my only point on that. If it doesn't look like a city street, my concern is it's an intersection, and people are going to be slip-sliding through it, and they're going to say, what's the city doing about it?
Any other comments? Thoughts? Everybody feel like they have more information going into next week? Great. Thank you both, Mr. Gangler and Mr. Grasser. Appreciate it. And Mr. Phelan. Any other comments for the good of the order?
Move adjourned.
Move to adjourned. Weber, second by Weigle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign, move adjourned.
This meeting has been brought to you in part by...
Let Grand Forks International Airport help you start your next vacation off on the right foot. Grand Forks International Airport offers flights to the sunny destinations of Orlando, Las Vegas, and Phoenix on Allegiant, and connections anywhere in the world through Minneapolis-St. Paul on Delta. Forget the hassle of long drives, parking nightmares, and stressful check-ins. The convenience of flying locally means less headaches and more time for you. Grand Forks International Airport, your airport, simply grand.